I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first thing is to approve the agenda. I know we have some minor corrections to some of the items in the packet. We will address those as we take those items on. So if there's any changes or additions or questions on the existing agenda?
I move to accept the agenda.
Motion by Sean Ryan to accept the agenda as proposed?
Second.
Second by Bruce Wolfe. There's no other comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Okay, passes four zero. Ken, are you taking municipal state aid roads or Mike?
I can take it. Alright. It's kind of along with, excuse me, the municipal state aid system Chris had ordered you for the council a few days ago. But if council recall, and a couple of you were not on the council at the time, but back in 2018, Scott County revoked the county stated highway designation for about a mile of County Road 37. Because that was revoked out there, county state highway system that actually gave the city 0.2 additional miles that we could use on our own state aid system. And if you look at the map with the overhead, I'm just showing you a small portion of our state aid route map, but all the state aid routes are in the paint or purple color on the overhead there. And they are required to connect from a county road, or a state highway, or another local state aid route. And serve kind of a more high-traffic purpose and function. So as I said, we got additional 0.2 miles that we could allot to a state aid route within the city. And by adding that 0.2 miles to the 0.11 miles we already had sitting on the books, we didn't have enough designated mileage that we could get a complete state aid segment until we got this 0.2 mile route. So Chris and I had taken a look at some routes in the city that we had looked at in the past, and finally had enough mileage available to designate. And we wanted to propose that First Street Southeast between Lexington Avenue South and Tenth Avenue Southeast. This really goes right behind the East Palm Plaza strip mall. So you got that block of commercial, and then the other block closer to Lexington's residential. But it was really the best route we could determine that, one, we could fit the mileage that we had, two, allot to a stated road. And then hopefully have higher counts. Now, I have not completed the traffic counts yet. I'm going to be digging the traffic radar coming around this week to do that. But I figured this is the best route we could use for that. And really, you want to get higher traffic volume roads. That helps get more funding through the stated system ultimately. And we really didn't have another option for additional mileage or segments that we could do at this point. So basically, we have in front of you the resolution that would establish this new route on the stated system on First Street Southeast from Lexington to Tenth Avenue Southeast. And there was a little error on the memo. It said Lexington Avenue Southeast, but it's Lexington Avenue South. And then on the resolution itself, that's Third Street Southeast. It's actually First Street Southeast. So I just want to point out those couple minor corrections as well. And then it will be certified if the council is approving of that tonight, and will be added to our system for the 2018 certification. Or, excuse me, for the 2020 allotment, even though you're doing it in 2018.
Okay. So is the city's advantage to add this whenever they become available, or if their low traffic counts is their issue?
Well, it's better not to have it just sitting on the books regardless of how low the volume is, but this one we feel provides pretty good traffic counts just on that commercial segment in particular, right behind the East Palm Plaza, you know, kind of runs from McDonald's. Driveways going and out of there as well. So we just didn't have enough mileage to allot to even make the connection from a state aid route to a state aid route until this was available.
Can you explain that a lot, Ken?
So I'm not an expert by any means in the whole state aid route system, but based on our overall mileage of streets within the city, we have 20% of the miles we can allot on our state aid system. So basically 20% of every, and that's why you had one mile of designated state aid route that was revoked by the city, we could then add onto our system for that full mileage.
So we're basically at the top of our allotment?
We have, yeah, we're going to hit up what's here.
0.04.
0.04 miles remaining. Yep. So we want to try to keep that as small a number as possible. Otherwise, you don't collect needs on it. It doesn't do you any good every now and then. I think we had gone, well, I think we lasted this in 2016, we had that 0.11 miles. But we just didn't have enough there to make a connection.
Another clarifying point that we should make, and if you remember, we had the discussion when we went through the 2019 project of the work that we're going to do on Taylor. This is similar to that, that we are placing the state aid designation on this roadway segment. It's not making any statement that we are going to do any construction now, in the next year, or in any number of years unless we put it on our state aid construction planning. We're just adding that mileage to the overall system. Up until we construct that, anything on that segment, we're allowed to potentially, if we found that we could be better served if we gained additional mileage, that segment could be moved elsewhere within the community. When we do go to construct on it, then we're locked in for 20 years. And if we try to un-designate it after we had drawn and used state aids to help reconstruct that road, then we're required to hold on to that segment for 20 years. So it's just putting a designation that it's on the state aid system doesn't mean we're going to just do an improvement right now at all. Does that add to the street maintenance, such as plowing and? No, we're already doing all of that now. It's just placing a designation on it that allows us to draw additional state aid dollars from the state of Minnesota.
Just adds to the number, too.
Yep. Any other questions?
I will do move.
Okay, well, seconded. I got a motion by Rick Siler, seconded by Chuck Nicolai to approve the resolution with the change from First Street Southeast.
To First Street.
Well, I missed one. First Street Southeast to Lexington Avenue South to Tenth Avenue.
What, did you have the correct address?
Yeah, yes. So the correct.
So we'll just correct them.
You're in mind of that?
Yep.
Okay?
He gives you the correct, so you get the one.
Well, no, I, no. They told me live. That's all. I didn't get a new one.
Don't get any old man, you know.
Okay, I got a motion and a second. If there's no other comments, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Okay, passes four zero.
What about me?
They tried to give it to you, you were walking around town. Okay, next, introduction of ordinance remaining in portion of County Road 37.
Alright, so again, related to County Road 37.
Renaming it, huh?
Renaming it. So again, with County Road 37, we have associated turnback of 37. We had a portion of that road where we had basically nine properties addressed off of County Road 37 that did not have an alternate street name, going back to any of the plating of that area. And when that street is turned back to the city, it needs a city street name. And all the properties on that stretch are kind of highlighted here from the stoplight at Main Street, Tenth Avenue Southeast. So basically, it includes Holiday, Subway, Fishtail Grill, the insurance building on the east side of the road, Main Street down, the Madel Clinic. There's one single family home, and then finally Community Baptist Church. So those are the nine properties that are within that segment of County Road 37 that will need to be renamed. Not sure why that segment did not have an alternate name when it was platted, but it was supposed to have on the plats, County Road 37. So when that's revoked, and we've been made aware that that will be effective on May 1st in that agreement, so we wanted to kind of get ahead of that process a little bit because we have to change the name of the streets. We haven't done this for quite a while, but it has to be done by ordinance. And Scott Ricks drafted the ordinance that would rename that portion of County Road 37. Basically, it's only a segment from Highview Circle Northeast South to Front Highway 19 on 37. That's just the area that you go north of that. Everything's already named 7th Street Northeast in addition to County Road 37. Street signs have already been named that for years, but all these we have to change on. How many street signs gone it was? We have inventory that I don't think yet, but.
No, we have inventory, that's it.
All street signs and everything have to be changed all the way down to the intersection. But we are recommending, just because it lines up directly to Tenth Avenue Southeast, that that segment be Tenth Avenue Northeast, which would kind of match our grid addressing for Northeast Southeast designations that we have throughout town. If you would wish to move forward with this, we have not at this point notified the nine properties at this time. Would want to do that this week if you wanted to move forward. Again, indicating that maybe first dates is when we would want this to take effect. So again, this would be just an introduction of the ordinance. Should you want to hold this first reading here tonight, we would need to publish first statute, Minnesota statute 415, 19, 10 days' notice on our website, and then in the hallway of City Hall up here. Should you want to move forward as well. So that's kind of the newer law that requires any ordinance to be posted for 10 days before you take any final vote, which you could do at the April, or excuse me, the April 1st council meeting. So it'll give about a month for people to really take action on changing their addresses and businesses. It's obviously a bigger deal than some of the one homeowner that's out there, but it's still obviously a little bit of a work that they have to do. And we have to notify on our end, post office, county auditor, emergency services, and that's all be in place by that main one as well.
Ken, could you explain for the council's benefit, why since it's all been County Road 37, why there's a division, split of the road the way you have it?
I guess just in the planning, you know, this had always been a county road from Tenth Avenue, or excuse me, from Main Street up to Highview Circle. East-west roads, generally speaking, or we try to break it on the break of the curb. So that's why you kind of see that street naming end there. Notice historically why that has always been County Road 37, since a lot of these areas were platted, why they had the alternate local street name, and this segment did not. I don't know the answer to that, but there was never a platted name associated with that segment of County Road 37 with a city street name. It's kind of oddy. Typically, we would have had a normal local name on there and not have to worry about this. They've all been addressed County Road 37 for far back as any of these buildings were built.
This is all mandatory, correct?
We do have to come up with a name. And the turnback agreement, the counties agreement actually spells out that we are charged with establishing a local street name, and then notifying the property owners to.
And you say you haven't notified them at all yet?
We have not yet at this point.
No feedback in the community?
What's that?
No feedback on the community board?
No, and I don't know that there's really too much to talk about, you know, as far as the name itself. Just to keeping, avoiding confusion for emergency responders and everything, you know, you got Tenth Avenue Southeast in the south. I don't know, there should be a whole lot to talk about, but.
But your action tonight starts the process to do that. If the council chose not to introduce the ordinance, then we have nothing to notify them of. Versus if you adopt the introduction, then we'll go through the start of the notification process so that that's in place and taken care of before you go to the adoption of the second reading. This would be the first reading of it, so.
Everything sounds great.
Any other questions, comments? I'm just curious, Ken, do you know why Tenth Avenue Southeast was named Tenth instead of a main? Was that a county?
No, that was a city decision at that time. From what I've gathered, I look back at the staff reports from the Prague State's first edition was platted in that first initial segment down there. On our addressing grid, and I don't know when that was established, it could have been back in 70s sometime, and that had already indicated what major roadways were going to be named by number rather than that name. And that was more, again, I'm just guessing, I believe, just to have some some number logic to it as you go out. But why Tenth Avenue was the one that was picked in that location, just where the red kind of line?
So you have some with names, some avenues with names and some with numbers.
Correct. More than major routes like this, the Collector Road generally have been numbers. 11th Avenue Northwest out in Raven Street is another example of that, right?
Any other questions or comments? If not, I guess I'll make a motion to introduce the first reading of this ordinance. I got a second by Rick Siler. There's no other comments? Questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Okay, passes four zero. Good, thank you. Next on the agenda, we're honored to have a president of the Gulf Board here with us tonight, Mr. Tom Mott, to kind of go over a couple things. More housekeeping than anything.
Thank you, Mayor. I believe the first item of business is the Gulf Course Consultant Agreement with GME. And in February, the Gulf Board took up the renewal of the GME contract for this year's services, and the Gulf Board approved a slight 2% fee increase on their management fees. And it was approved, I believe, unanimously, okay, let's put that out. The Gulf Board felt that GME provides a good service. The 2% change represents, you know, your typical inflation increase, you know, in accordance with the rest of our fees and things we charge for out at the Gulf Course, and and GME has been providing a good service, you know, for their rate and what they charge the city. And the Gulf Board felt that it was fair, a fair increase. So they approved that at the February 26 Gulf Board meeting.
And Mike, this will go retro, right?
Correct.
And there should be just a small change in section three compensation weighted left at $10,833 per month, and you had 33 cents. He didn't quite go far enough in the mathematics. So when I was putting mine and mine together, I noticed that change, and so I had that picked up in the revised agreement, but it should be $10,833 and 33 cents per month. Good. Any other questions? Any changes to the contractor responsibilities?
I don't believe so. We are waiting. Wade is going to be putting together a list of duties and responsibilities because they have added, I believe, a few items this year with regards to cash flow, day-to-day management. I believe some of the duties, maybe possibly Barb was taking care of, the transition to GME, correct me if I'm wrong. Yeah, and that's, and Mike, I believe that roster of duties is an exhibit to their contract, correct?
Exhibit A1, the fourth bullet, the word monthly was added. And A3, in the first bullet, the wording, prepared cement, handling reports, well, that whole bullet was added. What was it like there?
A3, the top.
A3, the top bullet was added.
A3, the next one. Right now Barb has been in the past kind of doing that role, and with the addition of Jeff Shapul, who is also going to be working for GME, they feel that they can handle that. Which is one of the reasons why we lowered the allocation on the budget. We called the allocation of Barb's time lower off the Gulf budget of, I think, $10,000. Eventually that day will take us over. And Barb has offered to assist and train them the way that has been done, and but to Tommy's point, Wade is going to come up with the duties of not only Kurt and Jeff Shapul, but also when they also have a new Holly Werner is doing the food and beverage, which basically represents Christie Gibbs last year who left midway through the season. The Gulf Board has asked Wade to kind of give duties so we kind of know who to work with when there's issues. Did we have copies of the required liability insurance in the city's file? Any other questions? If not, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the consultant agreement with GME. Second. Second by Bruce Wolfe. There's no other comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Okay, passes four zero.
The second item on the Gulf Board, I guess, agenda item here is our agreement with Golf Now. And basically Golf Now is someone we've, I guess, been trying to get in line with for a number of years. And we had a problem, I would say, we looked at this at least three years, three, four years ago. And we had some legal data privacy issues. We could not get on board with them. That has been resolved. And so basically now Golf Now is going to be our format for booking tee times. We're going to hopefully get a updated website and a little more smooth flow on our website for booking tee times. We're getting, we're getting some software rebates. We typically had been paying approximately $1,500 for online booking because we now will be brought into the Golf Now pool. I believe that will be refunded to us. And it looks like we're also going to get some additional credit card swipe readers, which is actually a pretty big thing. We're we've had a number of issues, but really wanting to bring the credit card readers and that ability to the snack shack out on the out on the course is going to streamline a lot of things for us. Hopefully cut down on our accounts receivable. Possibly less accounting charges. What we do give up to Golf Now, they do they do get daily tee times in Fair Trade, which they take the, they take the fee on. But typically, I believe, we get to designate which tee times they get, and typically those are underutilized, most typically unused tee times that we give them. So really, it works out pretty good for us, especially during the weekdays. There's quite a few tee times during the midday that don't get used. But basically, this brings us now into the Golf Now system, which is a nationwide system for online booking. Very well-known. I believe they're tied in with the Golf Channel NBC parent company. And it's, it's a positive. Kurt and Wade have, you know, brought it to us on multiple times. We tried, like I said, we tried to get in on this a few years ago. Because of the public and city ownership we had, it wasn't going to work for us, but now it will because of some rewriting of the contracts and the data privacy that has been agreed to. So Gulf Board voted for approval, and we think it's important to move forward with it.
Any questions from Tom or Mike? Mike, Mike, Mike? Mike might know some of the legalese part because he dealt with, was it Dave?
Dan Berry.
Oh, Dan Berry.
You guys named some in the contract.
But I mean, at our legal.
Oh, David Anderson.
David Anderson, that he was, the wording wasn't exactly what he would like, but he could label it.
Sufficiently his legalese that, I was just going to confirm what Tom said, is that we're saving having to pay $1,500 for the marketplace website, marketing suite, and the reservation system. And credit card swipe, we'll be saving another $700 that we didn't have to pay for those. So we will get those free charged as part of our program.
Exactly understanding what they're getting paid.
So they're getting paid, unless it says something different there, but they get, they get tee times. So they get to.
Late card.
With card.
Right.
So they get tee times every day.
And that works.
And we designate which tee times they get to advertise on their online marketing suite. Once someone reserves those tee times, those dollars go to Golf Now.
How do they get the money? It goes through their, go ahead, pitch.
Um, Montgomery, when Montgomery has this, and so I know there's two times, one time in the morning, it was like 10:30 if I remember correctly, and 1:15. If you ever look booked on Golf Now, you'll see the hot deals, and it's usually like 15 to 20 bucks. If you book a hot deal, you pay Golf Now directly. And then when you show up to the golf course, it shows you if he's paid. Golf Now keeps that dollar. Say I call and book that tee time, and I booked at the golf course and paid at the golf course, the golf course keeps that dollar. So it's, that's how it works. So if you ever go online and look, you'll see hot deals, those are the golf, those are the Golf Now owned slots. The golf course can still fill them. If I call and say I want golf at 1:15, and that's that slot, the golf course can fill it. Golf Now doesn't get their dollars that day, but that's how that works.
Thanks.
Not a problem.
And then since they're providing card readers, that makes me assume or think that maybe you're changing your your card processing to them?
No, we're updating the credit card swipe reader, the swipe readers on the side of the computer for either up in the bar area or food and beverage, or down in the pro shop, or out at the snack shack. And it's updating that. We're in the process of working, will probably begin either late in the end of this week, third part of next week, upgrading all of the hardware to be able to accommodate the Golf Now and the reservation system. And all of our food and beverage, and all of our pro shop, all of our stuff runs through Golf Now. We've been paying them $1,500 a year for that software, but now they've upgraded their software to the point that our hardware wasn't able to operate with the demands on their system.
So you're not changing your card processing or is?
No, I agree with you. This is, they provide the whole point-of-sale.
And they are using a card reader? Are you only using a card reader?
Yes.
So the Visa MasterCard thing goes through them?
No, I can't answer that. But our, all of the financial stuff within the golf shop is run under the for golf system. And that's the software that we have to operate that, and have that as patented.
It's very common in the golf industry. I want to say probably the most common nationwide.
Just because I come from a banking background, I understand the interchange and those significant money that you make on that. Assuming then maybe they're getting that. Because I'm not sure why they'd be providing machines.
I.
If they're not getting that.
Yeah, I wanted, I obviously, I envisioned it as they were kind of a point-of-sale software. Like I I knew the lumberyard business, right? And the point-of-sale software that we had that was unique to the lumber industry. I envisioned that's what we've been doing with Golf Now for a while.
I'm not sure.
Interchange rates have changed.
Right. I'm not sure if it's, you know, what you're alluding to is the fact that who's the contractor for our credit card service? Is that, that's what you're looking for? And I don't know if Golf Now is it or not.
It's a separate, it's a separate company, but they're better than Golf Now. You can't choose, you can't change it. You can't choose. You can't change it. At least that's the way it was when I from Montgomery.
But I know...
Because I think the fees were thirteen, fifteen dollars in the past year. Something like that.
The other one that seemed more troublesome to me was the, that this is automatically renewable every year. And my passage never, I've always excluded those kinds of terms from a contract. But especially since you don't have the opportunity to get out of it until thirty days beforehand. And...
I already had conversations with the city attorney's office on that. And he pointed that out, is that we have to be aware of what that language is. That's what they have in there. Unless after we execute the contract, we send them an email that we don't want this to continue, is it'll run the term, the two years after it's executed, and then we have to start all over and put it in the contract. So we can send an email after we execute this to effectively put an end to that automatic process. But in two years, we've got to come back and redo the contract again.
I'm more comfortable with that because I think it should be a city council two years from now that has option to look at it.
Well, but that's the problem and the challenge.
You're right.
This, well, that's a very concern. I had, when I reviewed it with the city attorney, he pointed that out, is as long as the golf board is aware, this is what's going on, or you provide and have somebody be responsible for this, is we have to go through the termination process as it's spelled out in the contract. Otherwise, your contract automatically continues and runs. We caught that on the elevator for the golf course that Len has cleaned up and I think will be bringing to you in Maine.
Yes.
But that one was a renewable for, was it every five?
At the golf course, it was five years. At the city, always two years.
So we pick up on those. And so in there, that in trying to take a look at what my options are in my conversation with Golf Now on Friday, is the only way to essentially put them on notice on the no auto renew is to send an email after we execute and send the contract and then they execute.
Was that scheduled in like on the golf board? Is it, if you have a schedule where that'll pop up, you know, like in a year and ten, year and eleven months? It'll pop up on your screen whether it should be reviewed, whether to continue? And then you come to the council and...
No, I think what Mike is suggesting is doing an email after we execute saying that we were going to run this contract for two years and then we would want to negotiate a new contract.
Well, that's going to put us right back in the position that we go through and do the same process two years down the road.
Yeah, I assume once we, once we're on the books that we're not out over renewing, they would send some, some communication that we have to renew. I guess we can put it in the document or...
Well, the effective date is spelled out up above in the top paragraph in the agreement, that it's the last date of the signature and below is the effective date of the agreement. And so therein ties in what that two-year term is.
I would recommend that, what you suggested or mentioned. The other question I had was them taking or purchasing the keywords, which I was surprised at. And that would be problematic if you, I would think if you canceled this contract.
I guess I don't have the contract in front of me, but...
Oh, you mean in the online marketing section?
Yeah.
The one I just circled.
If you go, if you say you go somewhere else, my understanding would be is you couldn't, you couldn't buy Google ads and say, I want to do a keyword search on New Prague Golf Course because Golf Now owns that keyword.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, I don't, I don't, I'm not knowledgeable enough with, I guess, marketing and internet web browsing. I guess what I would say is right now we basically have about zero capability as far as our website and what it looks like now and booking. And this is going to be look forward one hundred percent for the average golfer to go on the New Prague website and make a tee time and know it's set. Right now, you can't do that. Our system probably for at least the last two years has really not been available online. Or we've had a lot of bugs and problems. And really what we're looking forward to is the Golf Now system.
Yeah, I don't really have a lot of knowledge or, I believe, the recommendation of the golf board in your comments, so I'm comfortable with it. But the contract is, I'm just looking at a little details.
Sure. I guess I don't...
That might not arise to anything, but then again, it might. The way I read this is if you would say opt out of this and you cancel this in two years, if you plug in New Prague Golf Course on your search engine, it's going to bring you to Golf Now even though you have no relationship with them anymore. Because they own those words, those keywords. And I'm not an internet expert either. That's how I read this for now. I don't know if the attorney looked at that at all, but...
I think we should get some, get an answer. Do you need an answer tonight, Tom, Chris?
Yeah, I don't know.
Well, we should get a review to approve it, something to take a look at that language with the city attorney's office and see what things.
And then bring it back?
No, if you're fine with it or get some clarification.
But that's part of entered into it is that now I attempted to get some advanced clarification on Friday with some of the things that I was taking a look at in there. I wasn't involved with Kurt in the original discussions and the negotiations and the interaction with the golf board, is that we did spell out, or I sent back to Boettmer and Wade the involvement in the process as far as clarifying some of the concerns that the attorney had. And, you know, it's entered into the agreement somewhat at your own risk relative to the size and the scope. You know, the huge nationality of this whole Golf Now program, I think, aren't they like Comcast?
Yeah, it's one of the, it's one of the NBC or...
But it brings us into marketing nationwide. We haven't had some of that in our operations. And so it, there's a cost to choose to do that, to get involved in that marketing and the marketplace materials that they work with. Yeah, because the marketing suite is complete with email, text, and social media posting capabilities, fully responsive course website, all of the access to our tee times and booking, a white label booking agent for your course website, whatever that means. That I wasn't involved in that part of the process, but I think Kurt had highlighted those as positives as well as the upgrading to the latest version of the Golf Now reservation system, which also runs all of the pro shop and all of the food and beverage part of those operations, all of the accounting work that we do in Charlotte with the golf operations. So yeah, there's some things you give up to participate with defined terms.
Can we table until we get that answer and bring it back with the next council meeting?
Or do you want just the city attorney to...
Well, I think Bruce brought up some great points as far as, you know, I mean, if that, we determine two years from now that, you know, it's not bringing in any new people or whatever the case might be to give that, those portions up could really affect our numbers if indeed Bruce is right and they just people do a Google search and it directs them to Golf Now and then they're locked out because they can't, we don't have a program. The only thing I, I honestly don't, and I need to go through the contract. You know, we, we as a golf board are basically, you know, we're brought this to our attention that this is kind of, if we don't have this, we would have to create our own website, create our own booking system, do our own online marketing. And that effort would be a huge step back for us. This is going to propel us into the current, you know, what was the twenty-first century? So we're just so far behind and we're trying to get in line with, you know, thousands of other Minnesota courses or, you know, and I truly, I think exactly what you're bringing up are great points, and I don't have answers unfortunately from a real standpoint and ownership of Maine and how that works from a web-based search. So that definitely, I guess, should be going through the attorney. But we're kind of behind the eight ball as far as how far we are behind on our website. And this is truly a platform that will get us up to date and kind of the whole basis of our computer upgrade at the course. We spent over twenty thousand dollars last year in unplanned budget because our hardware was outdated and couldn't handle the Golf Now updates they were trying to do, try to run our point of sale, try to run our credit cards, try to run the snack shack, because we're working with computers from the late nineties or early two thousands. So basically all, probably by a factor of three, we could have had all new computers, this Golf Now system, you know, for a third than cost last year. And we're back to where we started. So if we start out this year without this platform, I don't know. We could be in our twenty thousand dollar predicament again this year.
Yeah, and I'm not, Tom, don't get me wrong. I'm not saying that, I mean, everything you described sounds really nice, but I think Bruce brought up some really valid points that I would feel more comfortable if, if I could get the city attorney's opinion on the items that Bruce brought up.
How...
And I think, I think the problem though is if the new computers are coming in next week, we don't have the luxury to wait because we need to get that stuff up and going. If we're going to be, if the snow's gone and the course isn't going to open by middle of April at the latest, we might cause a problem on our startup.
The only thing that's problematic to you is the keynote, is that right? Because I mean, what you're saying there is that if we go through with this, what we'll be doing is selling the keynote rates, basically to Golf One.
I believe it says that we're giving them the permission to buy the keywords in search engine marketing. And I'm not familiar with this, so this may not be an issue at all. But the way it's written, it seems like there's some value in their asking as part of the contract.
Because it even seems like if that was to happen, and we wanted to advertise...
By the attorney's office.
It would be a matter of checking any of that. So I don't know how problematic that really is. I hate to table this issue and not be able to take the action that's necessary for them to get there. You know, and since I have been looking at it for two years and since the city attorney has looked at it for two years, I would just hate, I understand where guys are at though. You know what I mean? We don't, the computers are in the future. And we need to sell away our rights to something just to get onto it. However, I don't know if this is a big enough hurdle to slow down the action that needs to be taken because of...
How are we slowing it down? I'm asking for two weeks to get a better, a better question. April first is our next meeting. We could approve it.
The computers are coming next week.
No, I understand that. But I'm just saying, you just made the comment that you don't think they're going to be golfing until mid-April.
Yeah, what if, you know, the rest of the week, what if we're supposed to be golfing by April first and we don't have a meeting and now we don't have this platform going? We're losing revenue. That's my only concern.
Right.
If you're willing to say that, then you've got to remember when it comes time to evaluate how this golf course did, is a decision the council made to lose revenue for a couple of weeks because it's going to...
And I'll interject, you know, I think our biggest issue too, I'm not, yeah, as far as revenue, I don't know if that's potentially that loss is there. But the biggest, you know, need for time is the ramp up. You know, we're going to have to, if computers are not in this week or in next week, obviously the software is going to have to be installed. I'm hoping it's not a big ramp up for our employees in the sense of everything's new and they don't understand that system. I can't comment on if there's a big change there. But it sure would be nice to have a week or two ahead of this, you know, the doors opening to get on board.
Can I ask a procedural issue? Is it possible to call like a special city council meeting in a week after it's reviewed? Or is that going to be too expensive for the city to...
I think it's a matter of that if you look at section 11, it deals with ownership of property and that. And I think that we can probably get the issue or the concern taken a look at with the city attorney to attempt to see if we can garner his satisfaction before we move forward with the approval of the execution of the contract.
So we could take action with that.
You could do it with a contingency that we make sure that the issues that are so noted are taken care of or resolved by the city attorney's office with Golf Now before we execute the contract.
I would give me fine with that.
You okay with that?
Yeah, I'm okay with that too. I think it's an understanding for the attorney if this is material or not. Do we have to buy the keywords back? Or is there a scenario that maybe? Because it looks like you can choose no. You choose yes. So...
And I wasn't involved in that part of it. And we did point out that we looked at it, we go back in.
And I'm sure it was chosen yes because that way when you do call up, you might be in front of someone.
Well, expand.
And that may be great if you work into, into the contract, maybe there's terminology that they sell back to us or give it to us. Or maybe it's you only buy it for a year at a time. By the way, I started experiencing this, so I don't...
I wasn't involved in the initial interaction there. But what we can find out or get clarified is, was the difference if that's either yes or no or relative to the term, how do we deal with the very concerns that you pointed out?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with approving the contract subject to the attorney's review if there's any material. If that's a material issue.
Is that a motion?
Yep.
Motion by Bruce Wolf, second by Sean Ryan to approve the contract with the approval of the attorney on a couple of key issues. And Mike, are you aware of what we're looking at? Okay. If there's no other comments, questions, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposition? Passes for zero. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Get out there and start walking the snow away.
For your explanation.
Okay, Ken, are you taking the grant?
All right. So we have an item now forwarded from Park Board's meeting last week for council's consideration of a resolution that would approve grant application for funding of a outdoor ice rink improvement and pickleball courts at Sidingo Skate Park. So in 2018, we had applied for the same grant program, the DNR Outdoor Recreation Grant, that provide a fifty percent matching funds for any outdoor recreation project. So what we had applied for last year was paving the entire outdoor hockey rink area, basically the area within the board, enclosed area of the hockey rink up at Sidingo Skate Park. And that would be a reinforced concrete base. And that would benefit the hockey rink use in the winter, create a very nice floodable base. And then in the summer months could be used for primarily, we would have striping for pickleball and removable posts that could be put in that concrete base. And then cause to use for inline skating as well, should that use be something that is determined in the future. But really mainly pickleball and then the hockey on the concrete slab. Compared to what we had budgeted for and what we had applied for last year, the whole project cost has increased fifty-seven hundred dollars for our local match. So project is up to one hundred fifty-one thousand, even about our city match would be seventy-five thousand five hundred. And you said that was a almost fifty-eight hundred dollar increase from what our request was last year. We do have plenty of funds available in the park equipment fund, which is to be used for expanded and enhanced park facilities. So that is not a problem. We've got one hundred nineteen thousand available in there. And again, only our match is seventy-five five for this grant application. So this resolution would allow... So this resolution would allow the application to move forward and we would submit by the end of the month for the grant program. And we had actually ranked pretty well in 2018. The reason we were not funded based on feedback in 2018 was that they wanted more focus on your application on making the outdoor hockey rink function better, more so than adding pickleball as a new amenity. Fine, so we just had to rework some things in the grant that first and foremost it's a hockey rink. And I think what that went back to is the fact that the DNR funded the hockey rink and the whole development of this park issue with the same grant program. They just wanted to show that we're reinvesting in facilities we already had there. And oh, by the way, pickleball can be played out there as well. It's kind of an added benefit to kind of tweak the focus a little bit. Same outcome, same product, Park Board did review and recommended at their meeting on the 12th that you move forward with approving of the resolution for the application.
Do you have the version that lights?
Oh yeah, the other thing to note too in this particular location that's important to pickleball is there are lights for the hockey rink that can be used in the courts at night, it can be done and played at night. And additionally, pickleball's a little bit noisy if you've heard wooden paddles and hard plastic balls. So this is a nice location being away from any single-family homes in close proximity.
How many pickleball courts are going to be on there?
Four courts are proposed to be installed.
So.
I don't know if my, yeah, my, not the other, no, it's really not that long. We had looked at Northside Park previously and our homes within, Maggie is actually, one of the homes is very close to one of those courts and she said when people have played up there, you can hear it, but four courts is obviously different than one and this is just a nice location kind of away from any of those concerns.
So do we have any, any outdoor pickle courts as of now?
So we have temporary outdoor pickleball courts and I say temporary because we have striped lines at Heritage Park. The Pickleball Association has them available or community ed, you have to go pick them up, sign them out and then even set them up for that time while you're playing. There's no courts available right now that you can just, at any given time, show up and play. No permanent net, so.
So these would be permanent?
These would be permanent for the summer months and then the posts would be removed for the winter season, a plug put in the concrete and then flooded for the winter.
Good question, that's not directly tied to this, but the park equipment fund.
Correct.
Is the money from the ag land that we approved the lease for, is that put into that fund?
No, that's actually put into the land acquisition fund, which is a different pot of money that's for using for acquiring new park land specifically. This park equipment pot of money is for new and expanded equipment and amenities.
So the rental income the city is receiving from there is not being set aside for future improvements to that land?
It's being set aside for the purchase of additional.
Other lands?
Correct. It could be used to add on to that land we have or purchase land elsewhere, but yeah, so they're kind of different pots.
Is that a city council policy that or what, why is it done that way?
Uh, it's just been accounted for that way throughout. A lot of cities do kind of lump that altogether, but that historically during my, you know, 15 years here has been land acquisition fund and we get those dedicated typically at the time of plating for purchasing land. If we don't get it that way, this other pot of money that we get is generally when a single-family home or a new commercial business is constructed, it's for the impact that the residents or the number of employees are making on that park system. That's just kind of how we've chosen to break that up.
As part of the building permit?
It's charged at the time of the building permit. More so going forward, we'll be collecting that at the time of plating, but historically it's been collected per unit kind of as the houses or the businesses have been built. State law is dictating that that change and we've been changing that over time.
Council could have said Bruce originally that the general fund is what paid for that land that we're renting and leasing on right now and those lease payments could have been dragged back to pay for the startup funds that were used to.
Right, so is the money going into, is that an account under the general fund then?
Yes.
So it's going back in the general fund?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I'm doing Bruce.
Okay, we got a motion by Rick Seiler to approve a resolution for the grant application. Second by Sean Ryan. There isn't any other questions? All in favor say aye. Any opposition? Okay, passes four zero. And then renaming policy, renaming policy.
All right, so another item from Park Board meeting on March 12th that the university recommended be forwarded for council consideration is a review of the park, public park and facility naming policy. So that was initially adopted back in January 2004, which does predate my time in the city initially, hadn't been touched till, till now when the Park Board was looking at it. So what specifically was, drove the issue is we had a request from a particular landowner, I don't want to give you the details just because we don't have the ability and the policy to handle that right now, but a particular family had made a request that a portion of land they owned historically in the city had family historical ties to the land and they wanted to know not to rename the whole park, but they wanted to know if a portion of the park could be acknowledged by a plaque or a memorial or something to that effect and be erected in the park at their own cost. Our policy did not allow that as currently written, so basically from the word off and on through the meeting in March, Park Board took a look at our current policy and ultimately recommended a few different changes here. Page one was not initially included in the package, just didn't copy through, but there was only one change on that, which is not material to the reading of the policy, but on page one, it was just a incorrect word used under the objectives, but the real meat of the discussion Park Board had on the policies on the second page, this is kind of a big topic of discussion was, number one, the inquiry we got was to memorialize a family or a couple of members of the family that were still living. Our policy and actually a number of park naming policies in the state of Minnesota do not typically allow names of living persons to be memorialized in a park renaming or a facility renaming. That is starting to change more so nowadays. I think that the main reason for not wanting that to be allowed typically is you don't want a developer just buying up land, plating it and then simply naming all the parks after themselves. We do have good language in here, otherwise our language mirrors what a number of other cities in the area and throughout the state have that park names have to be after somebody that has had outstanding community service, dedication to the park system and its development and those types of things. That can prevent that from happening. So the whole discussion, the Park Board talked about this a lot, was that we didn't feel that somebody had to be deceased in order to name something after them, as long as they had that significant contribution to that park facility, it should be enough. And ultimately the Park Board and the council has to recommend that anyway. So that's kind of the big discussion point on, on page two. And then specific to the actual naming of amenities or areas of a park, not renaming the park, this policy still very, very much discourages that to happen. But under the plaques, markers and memorials page, so we've had historically, again dating back to 2004, a memorial bench and tree program, that's kind of where this policy came out of initially. So we have a program where you can buy park benches and trees within the city parks and you can have your name put on a plaque on the bench or next to the bench or the tree to memorialize an individual that has passed away or what have you. The new language is basically items four through seven, Park Board is recommending be added specific to the question of portions of parks and items that are maybe donated or contributions or a family's historical tie. And this was language we actually pulled largely from the city of Savage that had similar language to this, that would allow small plaques paid for by that requesting party and then reviewed by the Park Board and ultimately approved by the city council, that would allow an acknowledgement. Number seven really gets to the root of the specific discussion we, that led to the policy being changed that let's say a historical tie this family had to some park land and they wanted to have a small portion of that park or a piece of equipment or something named in their family's honor, that would be considered through this new policy. Also sponsorships could be considered if there's a donation, be significant and then some other language that was included in there in Savage and a number of other cities. As long as it's not some big gotti sign that, you know, distracts from the enjoyment of the park, but rather be proportionate to what they may have donated or what their historical tie to the park or facility might have been, ultimately subject to the Park Board and council approval. So that's kind of the, the main parts of the policy that the Park Board wanted to forward to the council tonight to take a look at, so really the part that shouldn't have to be deceased to have a park or facility named after a person. And then really the smaller plaques for parts of parks or equipment in the park to acknowledge a donation or historic family's tie to a park. Not changing the whole process to name parks to begin with or to rename parks, but trying to have a smaller acknowledgement type program over and above the park bench and tree program.
Just to answer your question, this resolves the issue with the family that we didn't name, I'm well aware of what the issue was on it, how does that solve their issue of property that has been?
So to answer your question, Rick, this would allow that family to make an application to the Park Board and ultimately to the council to have an acknowledgement plaque put on a sign, not necessarily the entrance sign, but in this case it was some wooded area in the park, have a plaque erected at their own expense that would acknowledge that that was a family on site, that they lived there for a next number of years and ultimately that language and, and process would be approved through the council. So this would allow them to apply.
How could we use the, how could we use the name memorialized when they're not deceased?
I don't think it would be memorialized in this case so much as acknowledging a historical family land. I don't think we'd, we'd probably avoid the word memorial in that case, I don't think they want it.
It is memorialized in the sense is that something's placed on a plaque and acknowledged as a dedication to the family for whatever, it doesn't mean that they died, it's just memorializing or accounting for.
The name?
Yes.
Correct. And I'm okay with it, I'm just saying that there was an issue where some land was acquired by, by the city, not necessarily donated. And the issue was can we now take and not only take the land from them, but their right to, if there's a park, put a memorial there, you know?
Yeah, I think to Rick's point, the argument that the policy used to say was if you dedicated land, you're, you're kind of giving up the right to say you donated it because it's required by the ordinance. And this provides at least a method and an ability for our family to say, hey, we understand we had to dedicate this for parkland dedication, but there's still some historical tie there and the park in this case had already been named, so they don't want to rechange the name of the park, just want some acknowledgement that the family lived there for, you know, over 100 years and that was part of their farm. So not saying it's the only case where this could come up, but I think as we develop, we could run into any number of other, you know, meadows and different features in the community where people might want to acknowledge that that was part of, you know, the mania they, they used to own.
Since maybe here's from Parks, I'm just to let y'all know, I had, had heard about this like three months ago and I just kind of went back to my history of living on St. Crood River and was memorializing people and putting it out there and I, I agree with, with the parks recommendations on this and yeah, no, I am. I, if you have history here like baby, I think it's a good deal. I recommend that they council approve.
I have some just general comments, I guess, this is such a hot topic now, it's really, I believe the state law just changed a couple of years ago to require that the person be deceased. And as far as for state land and whatnot, and they're actually trying to get a waiver to name the interstate park, the Morndale Park, because he's not dead yet, so they can't do it. So they're, the legislature now trying to get a waiver or exception to it, so it's, it's something that was a result of a lesser thing, the senator, they had that law for that money that's generated. But so we're, we're doing just the opposite with the state this has done, but I'm not necessarily in that trouble by that except that I would like the city to make sure we have the ability to change it. And so I have more trouble with some of the sections that you're not changing than the sections that you're changing.
You're saying change the name of a existing park or?
Yes, or any park.
Yep.
So the naming is.
So I think the renaming of the park, so a good example I'll bring up would be Sidingale Skate Park. It's an established park name, not tied to anything other than being very descriptive, obviously, it's a snake hill and a skate park. I think it's an awful name. Park Board and the council at the time did not look for naming that again after somebody that had a historical hand in that park development in particular or parks in general in the city. So this does not take away from the ability for that to happen, I don't believe. It's still in that case qualified, but I think where it does and always has still maintain that if you had a park, you know, let's just pick on Sellers Park for example, that did go through a naming process and it was nominated and went through the council approval through this policy. It, it makes it much tougher to take apart that, it's already gone through this whole process or had a historical name tie or, you know, those types of things to then just say, oh, Josh won't donate a million dollars, we're just going to name it after, after, you know? So I think it protects those cases where not a tie to the community, but it still allows like Sidingale Skate Park could be yet renamed for a more appropriate contributing person or a better name that isn't so utilitarian.
Well, I think the real life examples that we're hearing right now is the conundrum the University of Minnesota is going through with all their buildings and they're, they're basically trying to do it based on the character or the behavior of people from many years ago. But so number two, where it emphasizes that only parks name for geographic or feature or subdivision should be considered for renaming as well, that, that, that would, I would want the city to be able to change the name as named after someone if they so choose.
Well, I think number three actually goes to that effect.
And number three then talks, just does the opposite emphasis where it talks about, but you can do it for people, their name because of their character.
Right.
But I think that's problematic a little bit to me because as you're finding out with the University of Minnesota, they're going back and finding errors in someone's character and then you have family coming back, well, his character wasn't that bad, so you're going to have this going back and forth. I, I would like us to think about in the future, if you just make that a little more discretionary instead of having to achieve, you basically have to do research to say this person's character isn't good to be able to rename a park. I would like to have more discretion. And that leads me then to the next page where it says you can have parks named by deed restriction and then there's no way to change the name of a park if you find that Bruce Wolf was a slaw from wherever you named the park after him. So that's another area where I'd rather consider taking that ability to do deed restrictions off the table. I don't know if that's common practice.
I don't think it's very common to do the deed restrictions anymore and ultimately even this policy would allow at the time, the council to just say, no, we're not going to entertain your deed restriction. So, I don't know, you probably could have just removed that.
Exactly, you know, and.
And I think it's listed in two spots. And number two is there as well, but.
You know, how much authority do we have to go back and say, you can't, Washington had slaves, so we have to change everything that's in Washington. You know what I mean? It's not, we shouldn't have the ability to go in and change a decision that another council made without due process, for sure, but on the deed restrictions, or you're doing that, and Washington owned the land, so it's being Washington park. That's just an example.
Yeah, I'm saying that you should maintain the ability to change the name. No name should be in concrete.
I don't think that's true. You know, what they did with like their downtown or Minneapolis with that lake, I mean.
So they changed the name?
They should have.
Okay. I respect your opinion, I just have a different one.
It's just that the decision that you make, you know, we're assuming that you did due diligence and you made that decision deliberately. So how can Joe Blow, 20 years now, come back and say, you know what, Bruce, why did you do that?
I'm not going to argue that point, but no, it's just new information that comes out because you find out sexual assault or wherever the issues come up.
That's what's going to come up, Bruce.
It happens all the time and that's where things are coming up. And they were talking about renaming the Eisenhower Bridge to Veteran Bridge or something. So it's not necessarily that this person had a bad character or anything like that. Eisenhower is without question, but it's just a different time and place and they're going to talk about naming that bridge something different than Eisenhower. Because it fits the time of the future, they want to honor veterans.
And so it's. We're a country of history.
So I just think that it'd be good for the city to maintain its ability to do that to the deed restriction.
I think other than the deed restriction, I think we still have the discretion to do that. But yeah, deed restriction, I would agree with you on that. I mean, how much you do about a deed restriction if you've taken that with that restriction on there? That's a tough one to break.
Right, it's on there, but you can see they're going to take the land.
Right.
Yeah.
Isn't that a way you could just bypass that? It's just, you know, alpha acquisitions, take the land and then they're naming and honoring it.
What do you mean if you take the land, the deed restriction is still there?
Not necessarily, is it?
Deed restrictions don't go away.
Well, then we shouldn't even be having this issue because that land was, I don't know. We're a little too lawyer, you know what I mean? I'm not a lawyer, but I do appreciate American history. If we got a hero sitting here and we name a park after him, I don't want my grandkids to come along and change that name, honor it, call it even. I mean, you could go back and say, yeah, he hung off the check bar way too much, but you know, I'm saying, he was a hero. And we decided at the time to name it that, leave it at that. So I say the deed restrictions.
And I think we're at what everybody's having, I think Bruce, you kind of made points, kind of a hot topic.
Right.
But I think you're going to have a very hard time coming to a complete agreement on it, whether it's this council now or, you know, one in the future. I do believe this provides some discretion, but for those like Rick, you're saying you'd rather not have the discretion maybe? I don't. I don't know if that's a good idea. Just saying we're not going to ever rename anything, that would be your policy, but.
Once you carve a name and stolen, I mean, it's there. So I don't know.
The deed restrictions all different, because that's a legal document that's drafted and recorded at the county as part of that land record then for.
You typically need the deeding entity to agree to break that restriction. And when they've been long gone, boy.
And I think that's what started this debate. And somehow it went to the rest of the debate.
Well, I'm just asking. And I don't want to be laterless because I don't have any problem with what's being talked about here, but I would just ask for the park board to consider some of that change or at least to look at the personal character because it's just a difficult one to prove.
For now, I'm going to have a move to.
And I will know we certainly can look into that further. I think a lot of cities are all over the board on this right now, so I don't know. We looked at, geez, I think about 20 different policies, including Minneapolis Park and Red Ford and other smaller cities around here. Boy, there are a vast variety of different ways you can pick it, but I think for the most part, the decision usually always falls with the council, but if the council's changed, so can opinions and attitudes. So short of that, you would have to just say you're not going to allow it, but then the next council guy's going to come along and change the policy anyway. And allow it, so.
And the residents can change that council personally if they don't like it.
There you go.
So I think as long as the rest of the council.
I'll second. Okay, we got a motion by Rick Styler, second by Sean Ryan. Any other comments? All in favor of amending the naming park facility naming policy? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Good. Passes four zero. Thank you. Mike, you're taking this one? I didn't see Glenn run it up to the podium. So I can't set it down, so it's either you or Barb. And I'm just.
Mike, this one's yours.
They'll just pass it over to Barb here.
Well, she's so sweet, we'd all say, oh, yes, Barb, whatever you say.
What you have, again, continued as part of our 2020 project is an agreement, a proposed agreement between the City of New Prague and the Minnesota Department of Transportation, or MINDOT, for a cooperative right-of-way acquisition. What they're looking at as part of that acquisition is that the city perform all of the right-of-way acquisition work necessary to acquire the temporary and permanent easements needed for the 2020 reconstruction project. In that, that's not necessarily city staff. We've got those features identified in the agreement between both the city and MINDOT under the responsibilities of SEH. The purpose of this agreement is to ensure that we're able to get reimbursement for monies that would need to be expended. There are approximately, I think, 121 parcel easements throughout the construction corridor that are needed of acquisition under this agreement. There are only three permanent easements that are needed, and those are shown on, I believe it is page. Let's get to Columbus.
Five of eight?
Page five of eight, in the Columbus Main Street intersection in the northwest, northeast, and southeast corners of the intersection, there are permanent easements that need to be acquired to facilitate the proposed improvements that are needed by MINDOT as part of this project. Otherwise, all of the other ones, you can see the little triangular pieces in three of the four intersection legs that need to be acquired. There are, as I said, 121 temporary easements. And the reason we have that is that there's portions up and down the entire project route where the state of Minnesota right-of-way ends, the gap in between where that MINDOT right-of-way ends and the property owner, property is. And so what you don't want to have is gaps in the construction from the sidewalk or the back edge of where the sidewalk might end in the face of the building and/or the transition into steps and different businesses. So we're needing to identify it, as they have the colored maps identifying. I know it's tough to see, but there was no way I could get Exhibit A attached to the agreement. If I did reduce it down to the size that you see in front of you, I can assure you we have maps the size of what you see hanging over on the wall that has this, but this was done to attempt to identify the amount of the temporary easement that would need to be acquired. So essentially, we're looking at the 121 parcels is the estimated number of temporary and/or permanent easements, the three that we need. And effectively, the city is responsible through our work with SEH to conduct and make contact with all of the individual property owners to obtain the temporary easements that are needed. There is compensation and reimbursement under these items. And under the contract as it exists, MINDOT's total estimate, except for the city properties, required for the project is estimated about $95,000, so. The agreement finally came to me on Friday morning, and the reason you see wrapped on there is that I've submitted it to the city attorney's office, gotten some answers back today, but there's still an area that I need to close or to corral with the city attorney's office relative to the indemnification in the section that we have in the contract. But the intent is, by bringing it to you, was to try to get your approval of this so that we can keep this moving forward. Otherwise, we're delayed because we can't begin any of the acquisition process until I have this agreement in place.
Is the plan going to be to meet with the property owners regarding this and also talk about the water service so that, you know, we make it more efficient?
The answer is yes.
Okay.
But they may or may not all occur at the same time, where we're trying to get to that point so that we can be a little bit more efficient in the process. But the team of individuals under SEH that are doing the real estate piece may not be the same ones that Glenn, working with SEH, that are in the conversation with the potential sizing of the water service line in each of the building properties. So there could be a couple of different movements going forward, but ideally if we can catch across here and Glenn give the update from, it was last week, right? And that we had the meeting?
Yes.
The full day of three different time zones, timelines or time allocations to try to meet with people. Though we had limited turnout, I think that was the one, the mayor's picture was in the paper with Nikki that was here. I don't want to see what Glenn's thunder, but we were here, we had sent letters out offering to meet with property owners to do the very same thing that we're describing and to answer any questions on the project from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., 11:00 to 1:00 p.m., and 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. That we just tried that, it didn't work as well as we had hoped. I had a couple of, it went out door to door, I had a little bit better locking on conversations. And so we're working to try to modify those processes to readjust that plan of attack to try to do that. We will have to make contact within a relatively short period of time here to try to get these done. There are small compensation offerings that will be put forward for acquisition of the temporary easement because it's kind of just more of an inconvenience factor than anything. But legally, in order to do the project, we have to have all of these TEs in place in order to undertake the project. So the intent here is that we, under our agreement with the state, are required to do it to acquire the right-of-way, but MINDOT will reimburse us, and that's what the provisions of this accounts for. So in my recommendation is, like I had at the bottom, is to review and approve the agreement subject to final review approved by the city attorney's office. There may be some just slight minor changes that I didn't want to hold up and wait for the next two weeks. If I can get that done in a few years, so that we can get it done in one way.
Do you want to have any questions?
I have a question, I got a statement. The project is needed, it brings in a lot of money. I was not here at the time of the committee, so I couldn't put my critique in on to it, but there's some things I do disagree with, but I'm going to vote yes. And it's, I just want everybody to know that there is situations where I've been approached by some residents who have some very strong opinions on decreasing the size of the road. That's not really what I'm voting on tonight. It's important that this process keeps moving. And it's unfortunate, but I think that we're pretty much casting stone on some issues. But my vote will be yes. As to, the council doesn't need somebody coming up, project that was planned and planned for the way before I got here. So I am going with it for that reason and that reason.
Okay, well, thank you for your comments. Any other questions or comments? If not, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the right-of-way acquisition with the approval of the city attorney. And I got a second by Sean Ryan. Any other questions, your comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Okay, passes four zero. Consent agenda. Only thing on the consent agenda is you had got a replacement to the council meeting, council meeting minutes, March 4th, page 1142, that was handed off tonight, I just want to make sure everyone was aware of that. That was the only changer addition to the consent agenda, I guess. So does anyone have any questions or comments on the consent agenda?
Move to group.
There's no other comments, I got a motion by Rick Styler. Is there any other comments? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition?
I will second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I will second it, I'm sorry. Trying to get out of here, don't just kidding. So I got a motion by Rick Styler, second by Chuck McFly. Now, is there any other comments or questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Good. Miscellaneous. Mitch, you got anything else?
I'm good.
Thank you, thank you very much for your input on that. Done now.
I've already spoken too much, so.
And you probably weren't even on camera either.
No, for sure not.
No, but thank you.
No problem.
Patrick?
No.
Glenn?
Just a number of things, as Mike talked about, on March 7th, we had what we called our business meeting. We sent out notices to all the property owners and the business owners on Main Street in hopes to get them here to talk about their new water and sewer service, the temporary and the permanent easements that are needed, any concerns they had, things like that. We only had 12 people show up of 121 parcels. We're going to try it again on April 18th. We're going to do a 12 to 5 on that day. We're going to send out a different mailer, different, we're going to try to explain because on the last one we had, we think where we might have, one of our mistakes could have been, we said it was a 7 to 9, 11 to 1. And we did hear from two people that said, well, I couldn't commit two hours. Well, we obviously weren't very clear in saying you didn't have to come for two hours. That's the times we had set for you to stop in at any time within the period and answer some questions, give us some information. How do we get ahold of you? How do we find you? This is how you find us, things like that. So we're going to be a little clearer this time and say that you should only be investing 15, 20 minutes. But we do need this information, we got to talk to you.
Is it possible, Mike, that you could get some flyers together stating that it's an open house, that just come on in, ask your questions, do what you can do?
Well, we're mailing it.
And then I can actually go out and talk.
We did a direct mailing to all property owners.
And business owners.
So yes, we did send notices.
And it was listed as an open house so that people do know that they can come and go as wish?
Well, as I said, I think we probably weren't very clear with that, or we'll be a lot clearer for the April 18th one, saying you're not committed to two hours. We did state that you could come at any time, but as I said, we heard from two people that said, well, I couldn't commit two hours. I guess you could have read into that. So hopefully we're going to fix that and get a few more people than 12.
Right.
Golf courses starting to move, they started putting the subfloor down in the bar area for the carpet. According to the guys that started on that today, or the company, the subcontractor that's working on that, they will hopefully be done, carpet laid, and out of there. and out of there on that part of it by Wednesday, Thursday this week. Legacy is the contractor that is hopefully gonna get a couple of people here to start insulating the walls that had to be tore apart either tomorrow or Wednesday. And then hopefully, we're gonna get sheet rockers here either the end of this week or first part of next week. Thursday evening, 5 to 6:30, we're having the open house, March 21st, for the 2019 construction project. So you're all welcome to come to that. And on March 22nd at 10 o'clock, we're opening bids for that project. That's all I got.
So Mike, we did get the documentation from the county we were needing. With that, you talked about...
With the bid, yes, that the draft contract is going back and forth and being reviewed. Chris has added the other elements that needed to go into that, and we're hoping to have that to come forward on the approach.
Okay. Ken?
Nothing.
Mike?
Just noticed you probably received the flyers. I didn't heard from anybody, I'd sent out an email a number of weeks ago about whether there's any interest in the Eisenhower Conference, which is June 26th through 28th. If you're interested, I'd like to know what the government wants.
Where is that at?
Duluth.
Duluth, yeah.
Anything else?
No.
And I don't know if everyone knew, but last Friday was Mike's birthday, so happy belated birthday, Mike.
How old are you?
You never had it. Well, happy birthday, Mike.
Happy birthday, Mike.
Barbie, you got anything?
I don't.
Okay, Sean?
Yeah, a couple of quick questions, trying to get some answers for residents. The yield sign, or it used to be a yield sign on 12th Street over at the railroad tracks there, now it's a stop sign. It was changed a couple of years ago.
Up by the high school?
Up by the high school on 12th. Was there, what was the reason for it? Was that the railroad decided that, or was it the city deciding to do that?
That's railroad that decides that, but I don't know that it was ever a yield. I always thought it was a stop because we've commented on that. County Road 37 is a yield, 12th is a stop. And I remember, we've discussed it, and when I wonder why that's been decided that way, but...
But that isn't, that is the actual railroad that can come in and dictate that sign, or?
Pretty sure it is.
I believe so. I think it was MINDOT Rail Administration Office, actually.
Yeah. I don't think we have any right to say we're doing it. We can't touch the signs, that we know.
Right, okay, well, that...
It got knocked over one year, and we set it up and we got talked to about that.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
All right, great, well, I can get that answer to them then. And then, it's not gonna be such an issue now because obviously the thawing and melting's going on, but outside of the swimming pool, that one road, I asked one other time, but when snow was on both sides and people were parking on both sides, is there a plan? And that road's already pretty narrow as it is.
Which road?
Oh, you're talking about the...
First Avenue. By the fitness center.
So the wrong swimming pool.
Yeah. Is there, apparently when there was snow on both sides of the road and then people were still parking there, you could barely get a car through there.
There's no parking on the east side.
On the east side? Is that adequate enough, or is that during the winter, or I...
This was an extreme year.
Okay. So we just, I just, they just have to live with it? I mean, that's the way it's gonna be, and we need that parking?
No, back when the CEC project and the whole fitness center project was looked at and/or regards to parking, is you went through all of that analysis and discussion in taking a look at that the east side would be restricted. We left the parking to occur on the west side of the street so that the residents that live there will be able to park if they had family or friends that came over that they could park in that side, trying to leave and recognizing the tightness. The width of Glenhead Street, width is what over there.
I think it's 28, we're just talking about...
That the width is such is that we knew we couldn't allow parking on both sides. We had it on one side, and, you know, we've had those constraints on most streets, but that's why at least only, no parking on one side.
Okay.
It would, in non-snow conditions, it's doable to fit two vehicles by there, but obviously, you know what, the snow like Glenn said, he said it much tighter, but if you can get one vehicle through there, then the main concern was that a fire truck couldn't get through, and I don't think we've ever been in that situation at all.
Okay, and I didn't witness it, I don't live on the street, so, but somebody brought that up, that it was almost...
But that's why we didn't feel we could allow parking on both sides of the street and deal with emergency vehicles.
Okay.
Anything else?
Nope, that was it.
Okay. Rick?
Nope. I've said enough.
Your comments about First Street just made me wonder, are there still discussions taking place with the completion of First Street Southeast going through to Long Beach? This is, that's still...
Yeah, actually, Chris Cabot had received over the winter here plans from Holy Trinity to do their portion of the road. I don't know exactly when they will move forward with that, but it's in process at this point. Prayer Development Agreement with them, they had to connect onto that point and build forward, and they had hired an engineer and have done all the legwork at this point, so... Our real barrier to that at this point is the Becky's property and getting it fully completed.
The agreement, the agreement with Holy Trinity, does it require them to build a road regardless that goes through or not?
Say that currently, yeah. It would be, now, I don't know if they would ever bring this forward, but if they wanted to have the council consider an amendment, they could propose something different to that.
Yeah, wasn't the State of Minnesota involved in it because their entrance goes away?
They, per the plat that was done for church addition for their property, noted that once the city road was connected on the back that their access to the highway would go away.
Is that gonna be all ADA too? I mean, is there gonna be a sidewalk or a path that goes through?
Yep, sidewalk down the north side of the road, all the way through.
That is a big problem right there. I have to stop at McDonald's. Once I go beyond that point, it's not accessible for me. Braha Village, that's very difficult to get up into.
Yep, so the sidewalk will be on the north side of the road, and you could cross basically back into Braha Village from the south end of the curve, I guess you would say, into one of their driveway entrances.
I'm hoping for the best on that, because that is difficult and quite disappointing. Because that's something that I would thought for that building, that, you know, that would've been accessible for somebody like me. But when I went up there to look up in there for, you know, living prospects, that was inaccessible, that whole area there. Once you're stuck on that one sidewalk, you get to a barrier, you go all the way back and then you go out into the street in order to do anything, you know? So it's...
Correct.
It's because it's not complete yet.
Yes. Hopefully, hopefully they'll get, as they complete it, they'll be able to...
Yep, the whole intention of basically where it ties into Holy Trinity, that's where the crossing would be at that point. But the sidewalk will be through on the north side of First Street, all the way through.
It better be up behind me.
Yep.
I don't have anything else, so I guess I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second by Rick Siler. There's no other comments? All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Okay, we're outta here, thank you.